All right, this is a new business, item number, item number three. If you'll just kind of adjourn to the back at the outside. Plenty of room for you all to meet out where it's cooler out there also, so. All right, this is a text amendment, ordinance ID 1126, and it's identified as RZ 13-08, a text amendment to amend the city's zoning ordinance.
Mr. Chairman, this is a text amendment to the zoning ordinance to provide for syncing the sexually oriented business provisions in the city code to the zoning ordinance. Tonight we have with us one of our attorneys, Brian Dykes, and he's going to give you an overview of the purpose of this text amendment. Brian?
My name is Brian Dykes. I'm with the law office of Scott D. Burkhild, and we've been working with the Brookhaven City Attorney's Office in conjunction with them on adult business legal issues. As you may know, in January, the Brookhaven City Council adopted licensing requirements and some other regulations for sexually oriented businesses. In May, spacing requirements were added, and those require sexually oriented businesses to be at least 100 feet from one another and at least 300 feet from residential districts, churches, and other sensitive land uses. Tonight you have proposed text amendments to the Brookhaven zoning ordinance. These don't expand the city's regulations, rather they harmonize the city's zoning regulations with the currently existing licensing regulations for these businesses. Now, I've given you a handout concerning the legal basis and rationale for adopting these kinds of regulations. I've got to kind of blow through it. The upshot, the essence here is that a city can adopt regulations based on the documented negative secondary effects that other jurisdictions have experienced, as long as whatever the city relies upon is reasonably believed to be relevant to the negative secondary effects that the city is trying to prevent. And that comes from the Renton case. It's the middle of page one, a Supreme Court decision from 1986. On many previous occasions, the Brookhaven City Council has already considered evidence of this nature. That same body of evidence is the predicate for this zoning text amendment. A compilation of these secondary effects materials are on a CD that I'm going to offer as part of the record for tonight's hearing. If you would skip with me ahead to page four, I would like to point out a few cases...
Can you stop for just a second? Can you shut that off or just so we're not distracted by that?
The fan?
No, the...
Oh.
The projector? The overhead projector, yeah. Thank you, that's fine. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
No problem, no problem. We're on page four. The top two slides discuss several cases that have upheld location restrictions for adult businesses on the secondary effects rationale. The Renton decision said that cities can require adult businesses to open only in certain areas, as long as the city does not effectively ban the businesses. As long as the city's regulations leave some area reasonably available, then the regulations will satisfy the First Amendment. The second case is Illinois 1 News. A small city in Illinois adopted zoning that forced an existing adult bookstore to move from its preferred location near an interstate to land further from the interstates than the city. And the court upheld that regulation, explaining that there's no constitutional right to be adjacent to the ramp of the interstate highway. In other words, you don't have to make your prom real estate for commercial establishments available for adult businesses. Land that's elsewhere in the community is good enough. Another case that's notable is Daytona Grand. That was decided by the Federal Court of Appeals here in Atlanta. And that case upheld regulations that forced about 10 adult businesses to relocate, partly because there were sites in a newly established industrial district that they could go to. And the last case I want to point to is number four there, Talis versus County of San Diego. There, the county also moved sexually oriented businesses out of commercial zones and into industrial zones. And the court explained it was reasonable for the county to relocate businesses there because industrial zones, putting them there would serve to reduce crime and disorderly conduct and property depreciation, because those are located far from residential areas and have little other commercial appeal at night. So as long as industrial areas were accessible to the general public, it's reasonable to conclude that willing patients would go there if the adult businesses were there. The remaining slides concern other cases and studies that are in the record that the city council has previously seen that support the city's regulation of sexually oriented businesses, and I won't elaborate on those further. But I will just close by noting that the studies and cases are all made a part of the record, and they serve as the basis for these zoning text amendments. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I guess we'll open the public hearing. Daniel, do you have anyone speaking in favor of this amendment, or anyone speaking?
Not specifically noted in favor.
Okay.
I have Mr. Valines speaking. Opposition, I see.
Okay.
Good evening. I'm Aubrey Valines, 2900 Chamberlain Tucker Road. First, let me thank you for your service, and I mean that. It's a thankless job. You work long hours and you lose friends and you lose sleep. I was chairman of...
Go closer to the microphone, please.
I was chairman of the Ethics Commission in DeKalb County for years, and I worked hard and never got paid for it, and I lost a lot of sleep and a lot of friends of it. So, again, I appreciate what you do. The reason this had to come about is that we filed a lawsuit against Brookhaven. We filed that lawsuit, and we pointed out several deficiencies in their law, probably over 50. And so they've had to go back and make changes in the alcohol code, in the zoning code, and in the SOB code. I probably got about 50 more I didn't point out in the lawsuit, because my mother didn't raise no fool, but they'll be coming up in the future. I don't think that's really the question. When you look at these hundreds of cases or whatever and studies that I'm sure you all read and gone over quite diligently, that's not the issue. The issue can best, probably best be described in, well, by telling you, if I had a house that I wanted to buy near the 57th Fighter Group, or maybe by the Haven, and I asked the realtor or the lawyer, what are the secondary effects regarding crime around those houses? And what happens? Is there a lot of crime? And he said, "Well, let me tell you about what they got in Seattle when you got a bar and a restaurant together. Let me tell you about what they got in Amarillo, Texas, or Seattle, or Daytona, or Knoxville, or Wilmington, Delaware." You'd say, "Are you crazy? Tell me about the crime next to the 57th or the Haven." "No, I don't want to talk about that. I don't want to talk about where..." And that's what we've got here. You've got an establishment that's been there for 22 years, never been cited legally for breaking the law, that brings in $455,000 in revenue, the county that should be going Brookhaven, a year. You've got an establishment that has been there successfully, that its employees, its patrons patronize Brookhaven, and you've got to look at Seattle, or Wilmington, or Amarillo, Texas, or Daytona to figure out whether or not there's crime next to the pony, whether there's secondary effects. That's lunacy, but you can continue in this lunacy, just listen as the city council continues in their lunacy, because it won't be decided here. It's going to be decided in the DeKalb Superior Court, not in the federal circuit. It's going to be decided in DeKalb Superior Court. They've said they had to do this, because if you don't adopt this stringent adult ordinance, they go around the country, they just met them in Myrtle Beach, saw them down in Atlanta, they go all around the country with these boilerplate things, trying to sell them to cities. They said if you don't do this, you're going to have an influx and a saturation of adult businesses. There hasn't been a new adult strip club license in DeKalb County since 1992, because the agreement we signed and all the strip clubs signed is binding, and it's binding on Brookhaven. It was assigned to you as well. It was assigned to you as well in the lawsuit, specifically to any new city coming in. You don't need to look much further than that, but I want to point out something. When they elected the city council and all those people, they were talking about better government services, less taxes, being close to your local people. They weren't talking about the pink pony. They're still not talking about the pink pony. So what are these crazy people doing, costing the citizens of Brookhaven all this money when they're going to lose? And not only that, we've got a source of revenue for a business that's never had a problem. Never had a problem. I had to say my opposition to this, because I said the secondary effects are ludicrous. Imagine somebody trying to tell you about crime next to the pony by describing what's going on in Seattle, but you can continue the lunacy. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Do you have any current?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, anyone else? All right, well, then we'll close the public hearing and open it up to any questions. And I... I'm sorry, go ahead.
I want to address the chair. I have a concern. These text amendments, this reminds a little bit of the issue with, on the previous meeting, but, you know, we got this, this is an important issue. I mean, it comes, it seems only seven pages long, and I hate, I don't mean to offend the lawyers in the room, but I hate reading lawyer talk. And I've read this thing more times than I care to admit, but, Mr. Chairman, I would appreciate more time to review this. We got this on Friday afternoon, I got this on Friday afternoon, and we discussed it on Monday morning, and here we are Wednesday night, voting on it. I would like some more time to, I mean, I can read, but I think the implications of this text amendment is much greater. And so I think it's an important issue, but not necessarily an urgent issue. And if this is going to be decided in the DeKalb court, I don't know that we need to address it now.
We have a responsibility to make a recommendation on the land use part of this. We can vote, you can vote to, if there is a motion, you can vote to approve, you can vote to oppose and deny, or you can vote to defer. I don't know that we have any, I think that is our obligation under the charter, under our charter.
Mr. Chairman, can we vote to abstain?
Director, do you have anything else? And then I'll come back to it. Do you have any, any other, I mean, is that...
I would just like to state for the record that this text amendment was initiated by the city. This text amendment was drafted by our legal team. Our legal representative is here tonight. If you have any specific questions, he can certainly answer them, and it would be our recommendation that you move this text amendment forward.
Right, okay. Mr. Frank, what? I'm sorry to interrupt. Do we also have the option to abstain? I've been on vacation, I haven't read this, I don't...
Sure, you have the option to abstain.
I don't believe we do. I actually think in the charter, the planning commission, you can excuse yourself, you can, though it's not the right word, excuse, and so...
Recuse?
Recuse yourself, thank you, sir, because you have some vested interest, but I believe the charter says, and the commission says, we have to, we are obligated to vote either to approve or disapprove, or to...
I bet you are correct. I am, I stand corrected, thank you.
I do read that stuff.
Yes.
So, yeah, you can't, you know, if you feel you have a, some interest that would keep you from, you can refuse yourself, which case...
Well, I just haven't read it.
I'm sorry?
I don't have an interest, I just haven't read it. I've been on vacation for a while.
I'd like to make a motion.
All right, so, well, okay, so we have a motion, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to defer this item for 60 days and take it up to, I think it's an important issue. Fortunately, I'll be out of the country for the next meeting, but again, it's, in my mind, and maybe to the, it's important but not urgent, so I would like for us to have 60 days, or two meetings from now, whatever that turns out to be, to take it up then. That's my motion.
Okay, do we have, we have a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, so we have a motion to defer for 60 days. I assume that would be, time specific would be for the October meeting, whatever that date is.
I'm looking, I actually have it right here.
Okay, I probably do. Give us one second, so we get a date, so we get that motion correct. I believe that's October 2nd at 7:00.
I'm sorry, I got sidetracked.
October 2nd.
You're correct, it is October 2nd.
So, so we have a motion to defer to this for, till October 2nd. We have a second, and do we have any discussion on this motion?
I have a discussion point. I feel strongly this is coming from the city, and they're asking us to pass it. I don't see us making any real changes to the legalese, because our attorneys have drawn this up. And I think this is going to go to the council either way, and we are just putting a stop measure for 60 days on something that's important, that quite frankly, guys, we could say we're going to change all of this, and the city council is going to say no. So I think we're wasting time by deferring it, and that's my opinion.
Anybody else have any discussion? I will, I will say that I'm not sure what the city council will do, pass or not pass. I'll make my judgment on it, on this as a land use, that is, I see it as, you know, being asked to put in place a land use ordinance that says, you know, sexually oriented businesses need to be 100 feet apart and treated from residential, and the best judgment of our, of our attorneys, so I agree with you that, that if we want to be, if we want our person, our judgment as commissioners here to be heard, we'll, we need to vote up or down on it. If we defer, I think we are, I would feel I am personally deferring on my obligation to make a recommendation to the city council. Now, again, I'm not suggesting, I have no idea what the city council will do, you know, whether they vote yea or nay in this. I know I'm, I've been appointed here to make a judge, best judgment I can on this, and I've read the best, and I, again, I think that it's, we're being asked to, to tell the, give the city council some, some guidance, as citizens and as commissioners. That would be my, any other discussion, anybody else?
Yeah, I would say, I'm a little uneasy with this, just because I don't understand it. I mean, these are all legal issues. Frankly, if we're talking truly zoning, I feel like I have a good understanding of planning issues. But so, I feel like I'm being a tool here a little bit for attorneys, and asked to sign off on something that frankly, I don't understand. So, I'm fine with, personally, with not signing yea or nay, just letting the city council decide, because they perhaps do have better access to detailed legal questions and all the other stuff going around this issue. So, it's not that I think this is good, or, I mean, don't think this is good, it's probably useful. Frankly, I just don't understand it. I don't understand what it means.
Mr. Chairman, if I may interject.
Go ahead.
We certainly have our legal representative here tonight, who is very well-versed and capable of answering any questions you have. So if you need a bigger breakdown on what it means, or if you have pointed questions, he's certainly here to answer those here tonight.
Okay, well, that's good. I was asked first here, and then, okay, go ahead. Just maybe one quick comment, and then one quick question. The quick comment is, you know, the last text amendment we had was the height issue. And, you know, I think anybody who's ever attended any of the city organizing meetings, and then since the incorporation, is this on? Testing. Anybody who's attended any of the city council meetings knows that the goal of the city, after it has incorporated, is to adopt the ordinance and then clean up the ordinance as we, as we go. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I see this effort as, you know, irrespective of the subject matter of it, is from a, just a process standpoint, it's another step in the process of adjusting the ordinances and tailoring them and cleaning them up, and now that we are a city. As it relates to subject matter, whether it's a question for staff or for council, page seven, city council finds items 1, 2, 3, and it continues on the next page. In my, there is, this is a very complicated document clearly, with a lot of references to legal cases and so forth. But on page seven, city council finds item 1, SOB is a category that commercial uses are associated with, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So, can you kind of, what do you refer to the interpret...
Which page are you on?
Well, you know, I'm saying page seven. It's, it's different for the version that I have, I think. Section 15 of the amendment.
All right, section, he's discussing section 15.
Section 15.
It's on page 97, go back.
Okay. So, section 27-732 underneath that, A, B, follow, keep following, okay, then it says city council finds, it's after the long page of citations.
All right, pack, pack of page 100, about halfway down.
Okay, pack of page 100, top of the page. And if you go back to the, the previous page, at the bottom of page 99, it says the phrase, the city council finds, continues on the next page, in your packet, those issues. So, are we to interpret that as the city council has considered this matter, they've evaluated it to any degree, and they, they have found this to be true? So from a crime perspective, or urban blight and litter and negative impacts, et cetera, they validated that is the case, or, so how we interpret, to interpret that?
May I address that?
Yes, sir.
Yes, the lengthy citation of cases and studies are citation of the materials that are on the CD, and the city council has seen those and considered those from the start of the time that it's been dealing with adult business issues, back in December, again in January, again in May. And as for finding number three here, that's the same finding that is contained in the licensing ordinance they adopted in January. And, yes, it says that they've considered this legislative evidence, and this is a finding that they reach in support of the regulations they've adopted.
So they've, they've, they've been diligent in evaluating and analyzing the matter.
I think that's fair to say, yes.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Funny, I'm sorry, we have one question here, maybe, too.
No, I was just only going to state that from what we're dealing with in front of us is something that has been put in front of us by the city council and legal representation. And I would always go back to legal representation from the city, because I don't have an individual one to represent me on this body, and that's who I would ask for interpretation. Now, what happens in Superior Court is beyond us, that's between the lawyers. But I think from, based on what they have presented us with, we're relying on them for the legal representation of the city, and that's the body we are sitting representing.
Yeah, I, no, I, I, I agree with that. I'm looking at it, and I think there's a lot of, there's very, there's a lot of justification for this, and that's the city and the staff and the, and the legal council. And I'm looking at the two items that are land use, and maybe that's simplistic, but I think it isn't, in that, you know, we're being asked to, to look at this as land use plans should within, you know, to, should sexually oriented businesses, let's see, be within 100 feet of another sexually oriented business. And item number two should be within 300 feet of a residential area. So, I, you know, again, we're, we're discussing this particular motion, which is to defer, and, you know, if there's, I guess I will ask, does anybody else have any other discussion on this motion? If not, we have a motion, we have a second.
I just wanted to get a better, better understanding of Mr. Schmidt's question.
Why?
I thought he asked, has there been evidence locally in Brookhaven, now the city of Brookhaven, that the assertions made, you know, in all these cases exist here? Is that what you were asking?
I was asking, in other words, just for some guidance about how to interpret what the city council finds. And that was explained, it wasn't, it wasn't so much for crime statistics, it was more, you know, the city council finds that based on the analysis of what's been presented here, with all of the legal cases and so forth.
Okay, so, I would ask the question, has there been evidence, I mean, all these legal cases and studies, I read a couple of them, but again, we didn't, I didn't really have time to read through many of them. Has there been evidence that this is happening here, these accusations of secondary stuff? If we're not going to find a word.
I'm not sure.
I'm worried I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you made a motion to defer.
Yeah, let's take a...
I, I'm, you know, I guess the question, the question was put, to defer.
Okay.
You can withdraw that motion if you choose, but if you're not, you've asked to defer. There's been a, I...
There was a second.
There was a second.
There was a second, and I apologize, was it, I should have honored that second in that motion. We've had discussion on this particular motion, so I'm prepared to call the question on it, unless if somebody else has another item. So, all in favor of recommending deferral, say aye. Aye. Let's count that, let's show, show of hands on that, just to be sure. Okay, all opposed to the deferral, show of hands, and say nay, please.
Nay.
Nay. Four.
Five.
Five, so we have five, so the motion fails. The motion to defer fails. So now the question is, is someone have a, is it a replacement, is it a replacement motion, is that what it's called?
A new motion.
A new motion?
Do we have it?
A replacement motion.
I would like to make a motion to approve RZ 13-8, the text amendment to amend the city's zoning ordinance.
Second.
Hey, we have a motion to approve RZ 13-08 as recommended by the staff. We have a valid and legal second. All in favor of, of the motion to approve, signify, and raise your hand by, and raise your hand, please, and say aye.
Aye.
Aye, one, two, three, four, five, ayes, any, well, I apologize, did we get enough discussion?
Well, we did not discuss.
We did not discuss, so...
I would like to make a comment.
Please, that's mine, I apologize.
One of my concerns, I mean, I have, I really don't have much of a moral issue one way or another on this. My concern is more about the money being spent on this topic with lawyers. Again, no offense to you guys. So in the same context that if somebody comes to us and says, "We want to put a condo on..."
Well, remember, we're, we're, the discussion is on the motion. So, so keep, you know, it's fine, we're discussing, we're discussing whether the motion to approve should go forward or not, and vote, so...
Yeah, this would...
So condos, I'm not sure condos have, but, but, okay. Think as you will.
Yeah, cut me off if I could do, but I'm just, if, if, this is more of a procedural thing, and it applies to the vote. If somebody comes to, you guys can educate, if somebody comes to us and proposes a project, and then they say, "Well, but this project is going to cost your city $100,000, $200,000, a million dollars," that would be something that would be taken into consideration. Is that true or not?
That would be, you could take, as, you have an individual vote on this by the commission, and the, as an individual, as, as an appointed member of this commission, I believe you could vote anyway, and consider for your own vote, anything, I believe that's correct.
Is that a review staff, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question? The staff, would that be a review factor or standard that we would look at?
Well, the Steinberg criteria doesn't necessarily apply to a text amendment, whereas it would apply to a land use petition, so there, it's kind of like mixing apples and oranges.
Correct.
Text amendments do go through the same process, through this, which is why we're here tonight. So I can't really, I don't really know that you would, I'm not really quite sure how to compare what you're asking, because you were asking about the city expending funds on a zoning case. Are you talking about if it's litigated?
Mm-hmm, yes, ma'am.
Well, I mean, we're getting really far into the weeds, but at some point, insurance programs take over, so, you know, I, it's a really difficult question to answer.
Yeah, I'll let, I'll, I think I'll let you off that kind of thing, again. How, we have a motion to approve what's being presented. I think we have to act on what's being, you know, I think the discussion... I think we have to act on what's being, you know, I think the discussion has to be into what's being presented. You can act on and vote in any way as your conscience, or you see fit. So we have a valid motion to recommend approval of RZ 13. We've had a, we've had a valid second for it, and so, you know, if you want, I'm, we'll give as much time as needed to-
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm fine.
Okay, and let's make sure that this is an important issue, I want to make sure everybody has a chance. Anybody else have? All right, now, all in favor of approving RZ 13-08 text amendment to amend the city's zoning ordinance as presented, signify, raising your hand and saying aye.
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 It's five, eight, all opposed, say nay.
Nay.
So we have five in favor, too, the recommendation is to move forward. Thank you all. All right.